Welcome to the Winston Township Board of Education Reorganization Meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. Public notice that this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a note stated on 25th, 2022. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, hosted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, the Google Center, Edgewood Acres, Ellentown, and the Winston Township Post Offices. Mission statement: The mission of the Winston Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, like-minded learners, critical thinkers, and carry the common good methods of their community. Condition: In partnership with the community and in the kindling of cooperation and mutual respect, while providing academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Moving on to election results. Members of the Board of Education who have been elected for three-year terms, we have Ms. Debbie Esposito with 5,433 votes, Ms. Julie Peterson with 4,809 votes, and Mr. Joe Thomas with 4,793 votes. On the installation of the board members, I'm going to turn that over to our board solicitor, Mr. Power.
I state affirmatively, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of you. I further solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to Title 19, nor am I disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense in accordance with Title 18A. And that I faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations. I state affirmatively, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of you. I further solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to Title 19, nor am I disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in Title 18A. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. Mr. Joe Thomas? Would you state your full name, please? Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of you. I further solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to Title 19, nor am I disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense listed in Title 18A. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
We'll now have a roll call. Ms. Dragan, here. Ms. Esposito, here. Ms. Martin, present. Ms. Moore, present. Ms. Neans, present. Ms. Peterson, present. Ms. Pitts, present. Mr. Thomas, here. And Ms. Thomas, present. We have the floor. We're going to move on to the election of officers until the next reorganization meeting in January of 2024. I'd like the open floor for nominations for the position of Board President. I make motion for Cheryl Pitts to be Board President. That motion was being on. Ms. Dragan, here. Do we have seven? Yes. Julie Peterson, I second the motion. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. I'd like a motion to close nominations. Motion to close nominations. Is that Ms. Martin? Is there a second? Second. Can you forward me because I can't see on the screen. Ms. Dragan? Thank you, Ms. Dragan. Okay, now we're going to have a roll call to close nominations. Ms. Dragan? Yes. Ms. Esposito? Yes. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Ms. Neans? Yes. Ms. Peterson? Yes. Ms. Pitts? Yes. Ms. Thomas? Yes. And Mr. Thomas? Yes. Motion has carried. I'd like a motion to elect Ms. Pitts as president of the Winston Township Board of Education. Motion, Ms. Martin? Thank you. The motion has been made in second. We're going to move into roll call. Ms. Dragan? Yes. Ms. Esposito? Yes. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Ms. Neans? Yes. Ms. Peterson? Yes. Ms. Thomas? Yes. Mr. Thomas? Yes. The motion has carried. Is that your count? Correct. Congratulations, Mrs. Pitts. Your ballots are in front of me.
So before I concede, I would just like to thank board members for allowing me to guide and direct you forward yet just one week. Thank you. At this time, board members, I'd like to open the floor for nomination for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Julie Peterson for Vice President.
Second?
Ms. Martin? Nominate her. Yes. Ms. Joseph Thomas, second. Are there any more nominations for the office? Nominate Ms. Guevara. Is there a second? Board members, let's just be reminded that we need to speak into these lines. You're, Ms. Esposito, in person, all right? Okay, you know, we have to click there.
My, sorry. Ms. Pitts made the second for the nomination of Ms. Guevara. I bet this is four.
Ms. Esposito. Let's just go to the bottom and make sure that we get all working on this.
While we're doing that, this is by May, since we have multiple nominations from the position, if we can close out the nomination, we have two. It requires a majority of membership, which if we buy votes for that this particular position, as same as the president. So as we go through, whether you look through one or the other, if someone, when you're doing the roll call, this is a suggestion of the votes for a lot, that you would just provide individuals named after this emotion in the second, and we'll get to the next part. I'm voting it out. Before we get to the next part, you would hear say Peterson or Guevara's, and then count the votes down, unless someone has any problems with that process. Everybody okay with that?
So just once again, Mr. Martin, you have to choose nominees.
Yeah, we'll have to really close that.
And for the others, now we're going to, I don't want you to take one at a time.
You can do it combined if you'd like to, because whoever gets five votes will be the vice president, I think.
First, we need a motion.
Correct. Motion to close nominations?
Motion, yes.
Ms. Peterson, motion is in second.
Red is second.
A roll call approach.
Ms. Dragan, and this is a roll call for closing nominations.
Yes.
Ms. Dragan?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Neans?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
So as we now are moving on to the election of the Vice President, we need a motion in the second to nominate either Ms. Peterson or Ms. Guevara's. And when they respond, rather than the normal, yes, number of state, you would say individuals' names, and that's how the board secretary will report.
So at this time, I'm opening.
So we have those two nominations made, and we need a motion to move those two nominations forward. Is there a motion?
Motion to.
I like it. Move the nominations forward.
Move the nominations forward.
Motion by Mr. Thomas? Is there a second?
Second, Laura.
Second by Mr. Thomas?
Any other, I'll roll call by Mrs. Boyd.
And we have Boyd, Amy, Bill, Jay, candidate, like, for that.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Boyd.
Ms. Dragan?
Peterson.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Peterson.
Ms. Moore?
Guevara.
Ms. Neans?
Neans.
Ms. Peterson?
Peterson.
Ms. Gibson?
Peterson.
Ms. Thomas?
Peterson.
Ms. Thomas?
Peterson.
Mr. Peterson is being added eleven minutes to Vice President.
Congratulations, Mrs. Peterson. Moving along on our agenda at this time, I'm asking for a motion to appoint, as I said, the second, Mr. Thomas going forward. Is there a motion?
Julie Peterson will appoint Ms. Howard as our Board Secretary.
Move by, then, move by, Ms. Peterson, the second by Mr. Thomas.
Mrs. Boyd, we're going to move on to the other nominations, so that I can.
Hearing the nomination for that position, I believe having to move the second roll call, please.
Ms. Dragan? Yes. Ms. Esposito? Yes. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Ms. Neans? Yes. Ms. Peterson? Yes. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Yes. And Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now to designation at this time, I'm asking for a motion to include designation of the Public Agency Complants Officer as his charter going forward. Is there a motion? By Ms. Esposito?
Red is second.
Move by Ms. Esposito, second by Ms. Dragan. Need the others to, for the position, roll call, please.
Ms. Dragan? Yes. Ms. Esposito? Yes. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Ms. Guevara? Yes. Ms. Peterson? Yes. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Yes. And Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyd. Moving now, board members, I'm going to do that for the board. At this time, I'm asking for a motion for our business operations, as we have done with our board of education meetings. Number one, we accept all authority. And number two, we will accept standing subcommittee meetings. Number B, under A, schedule of our 2023 Board of Education meetings from this month, January 23rd through August 23rd. And number C, acceptance of fact that we broke in mistake, the code of ethics. Is there a motion under the business operations, A, B, and C?
Peterson, move for approval of adoption, A, B, and C under the business management department.
Is there a second?
Red is second.
I'm sorry?
Red is second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Dragan. Ready for the comments? Yes, Ms. Esposito. Now, I said that you were talking about level B?
Uh, yes.
And you said that some of them are out the same? I'm sorry. They go across.
They go across.
We know that.
They go across.
Because we need twice the money, the second, and the fourth person. Ms. Pitts, I had a, I just wanted to be sure, just for the public, I know we know that the next four meetings are going to be held in the administration. Well, that was meant to actually be announced at our first meeting, regular meeting of this month. We don't need to have more than ever meeting, but as you know, that's, that's not a problem. I, I just wanted to bring that out so people could, that I'm sure I'm right. Thank you.
Do you think this four people tomorrow will advertise the meeting? The metal, I can't do that now.
So moving on, asking for the roll call, please.
Ms. Dragan? Yes. Ms. Esposito? Yes. Ms. Martin? Yes. Ms. Moore? Yes. Ms. Neans? Yes. Ms. Peterson? Yes. Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Yes. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, one minute, this is after page five, moving to appoint and delegate support committees. At this point, I repeat off the appointments for support committees. And number, starting with letter A, the New Jersey School Board Association, the representative, myself, I'm the representative as of the New Jersey School Board Association. Letter B, Camden County School Boards, Miss Rita Martin will be the representative to the Camden County School Boards. Letter C, the New Jersey Urban Boards Committee, Miss Rita Martin will be representative to that committee. Number D, Camden County Educational Services, the representative to that will be Ms. Julie Peterson. And just as a point of information, each particular committee is actually due only once a month, which means this year for the representatives to attend. In addition to that, if at any time the appointed representatives are not able to make any of these meetings, I would expect that the representative would give the call so that I can make sure that there will be another board meeting would be there to represent us. Any questions? Thank you. Moving now to our committee appointments, our Citizens Advisory Committee, the Administrative Advisor, Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean. I went from letter D, we finished letter D, thank you, continue to letter B, the Athletic Committee. For the Athletic Committee, the chairperson for the Athletic Committee is Ms. Martin. The members of the Athletic Committee will be Ms. Joseph Thomas and Ms. Debbie Esposito. Moving now to letter C, the Citizens Advisory Committee, the Administrative Advisor to that committee will be Ms. Rita Martin. The co-advisor to that committee will be Ms. Rebecca Neans. Moving now, moving down to letter G, the Education Committee, the chairperson of the Education Committee is Julie Peterson. The members of that committee, Ms. Kelly Thomas, Ms. Rita Martin. Moving now to letter H, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, the chairperson of that committee will be Ms. Kelly Thomas. Members of that committee will be Ms. Julie Peterson and myself, Cheryl Pitts. Letter I, the Marketing Committee, chairperson of our Marketing Committee will be Ms. Cynthia Moore. The members of that committee will be Mr. Joseph Thomas and Ms. Rebecca Neans. Moving now to our Negotiations Committee, the chairperson will be Ms. Julie Peterson. Members of that committee, Ms. Randy Dragan, Ms. Rita Martin. And now, board members, with letter K, our Operations Committee, the chairperson will be Mr. Randy Dragan. The members of that committee will be Ms. Debbie Esposito and Ms. Kelly Thomas. Moving now to our Policy, HR Committee, chairperson will be myself, Cheryl Pitts. Members of that committee will be Ms. Debbie Esposito, Ms. Rebecca Neans, and Ms. Joseph Thomas. that committee will be Ms. Debbie Esposito, Ms. Rebecca DeAndres, and Ms. Joseph Thomas. Moving now to letter M, these next three appointments, one members will be the call at our last meeting, Mayor Lawrence S. representation on the board of these two township committees. And so, letter M, Willsburg Township Municipal Drug and Alcoholics, representative on the board to that township committee will be Ms. Rita Martin. Letter N, the Willsburg Township Economic Development Council, the representative on the school board to that township council will be Ms. Ray Draven. And the third question, Mayor Lawrence, was that there be a representative on the board with regards to our HSA and that the [inaudible] would I accept that this is a matter from the high school?
Yes.
Make that a question. Moving now, one members, I'm at the top of page six, and we move now to our doctor's representative, which is something that many of you some have, but we do have the purpose for this to ensure that we stay connected collectively and individually to our buildings. Now, as I read to our meeting buildings, one members, please be advised that at any time we need to switch, uh, we may do that, I'll be precise that you can hear. All right, uh, representative to school number one, Ms. Cynthia Moore. Representative to our school number two, Ms. Ray Draven. Representative to our school number three, Ms. Julie Peterson. Representative to our school number four, Ms. Rebecca DeAndres. Representative to our school number five, Ms. Rita Martin. Representative to our school number six, Ms. Debbie Esposito. Representative to our middle school, Ms. Kelly Thomas. And representative to our high school, Ms. Joseph Thomas. At this time, one members, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
Ms. Pitts, before we do that, um, I would actually like to remind the citizens of my very position.
Okay. Okay, let's see. Any other changes for this board?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Esposito?
I would like to remind this.
Your mic is on, man, I'm sorry.
I can speak loudly, though, to serve the community. I said I'd like to remind the Athletic Committee, but I think we have to put it on the, uh, on the, uh, side.
Okay, so let's do that. Letter B, Athletic Committee, we will remove Ms. Esposito, I am. And, letter F, the Citizens Advisory Committee, who places Ms. Esposito there. Is that not correct?
Now, the president should have the [inaudible].
Yes, we will be, uh, I already asked, we will drop down to Citizens Advisory. No, she didn't. Okay, any other questions, changes, or a motion? At this time, I'm asking for approval. The agenda items, beginning at page 5, and continuing through to the middle of page six, is there a motion? Middle of page six. Is there a second?
Second, Ms. Martin.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Martin. Any further comments or questions? Hearing the roll call please.
Ms. Draven?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. DeAndres?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Motion has been heard.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Moving now, one minutes, the whole business. This is our realisation meeting of the B and the whole business, and the rest, especially at this time. Hearing the, moving on down to new business, I would imagine that in some sense, I would be looking at this far as the business, but would there be any new business you would care to discuss at this time? Hearing the, moving down to our informational items.
Yes, uh, plus, I just have a couple of information items for this evening. One, the electrical talk, scheduled for Monday, January 11th, 7 p.m., uh, additional information will be provided to the committee. I plan to be integrating, uh, your sign for, uh, this is for reference, right? Next school board meeting did have as part of our information items, that our next school board meeting can be Wednesday, January 11th, 7 p.m. Uh, as board members know, new board members also, the meeting will be held at the District's Administration Building, uh, as a trial work for a live streaming of board meetings. Um, if you recall, uh, at our last meeting, when I mentioned, um, the trial basis at Jan, uh, start January 11th for school board meetings, January 25th, which is our second meeting in January, uh, there is a challenge, and, uh, school seats is scheduled to perform that evening, and Mr. Jackson lets know that he has a large group of students coming out to perform. As you know, the pass yet, the administration building, uh, is limited, so therefore, um, I think at this point, the discussion, we have, uh, usually, of course, we have a large group of students, a lot of parents come out, conditions go to, you know, begin, and we may have capacity with, um, performance, [inaudible] inside there. So, either we want to, uh, continue, uh, with that meeting being there, knowing that we had these issues, or schedule here, um, for that night, because I don't want to ask Mr. Jackson, that, I think, I'm a young man, and I'm already [inaudible] to present, and I'm like, oh, young man, that, too. But it gives us enough notice, uh, to have that meeting here, because again, keep in mind that that science only from trial basis is needed. So if it works out for us, then future performances, we may be able, uh, to better planning, but at this point, I think 25th is a meeting that we should bring back here for the same new performances, and of course, the first meeting, third word, we're back at the Administration Building, with the understanding, if things go well in terms of live streaming, then we need to consider whether or not we can continue back on that this Sunday. So that's what, for clarification purposes, our two regularly scheduled meetings in January will be, of course, January 11th, or January 25th.
Yes.
And then, the January 11th meeting will be held at the location.
Yes.
And then, January 25th meeting, of course, of the, the performance of the, of the students, and we will be checking here, because we have to gather the information. Then, I think that's a good recommendation. In addition to that, Mr. Long has, um, also advised, and for our first record is scheduled meeting in January, and certainly would be prudent for us to, for this time, um, when our [inaudible] very largely, but two that folks may not be here, may not have got the information to allow them to, uh, know that on the 11th, we will do a recognition. I was going to, to support that, uh, yes, I agree, we should have this on air, uh, but to support that as part of my, what we call the [inaudible] real talk, and I was also going to state that at first, board meeting in January, let, will be held in [inaudible], just to make sure that we get as much information out of the sponsor. So, I support the recommendation, but I will also try to maybe as big names as we are of the location, the sponsor. Doctor T, yes, I, uh, concern something in this, when you chase the money information, um, this fits the identification of our board meetings and locations, is a requirement of the [inaudible] meetings, uh, without that [inaudible]. So in order to make sure that our records appear, whoever made the motion, who those items at the bottom of page four, would they be willing, and whoever seconded it, would they be willing to amend their motion to, uh, effectuate that date on the January 25th meeting being held here rather than in [inaudible].
It was motion by Ms. Peterson, and seconded by Ms. President. Yes, they were not able, and my motion to include, uh, the change of location for January 25th to this location instead of the, uh, this.
You can do just to go on, maybe, since we're just direct, uh, that was, it's been moved and seconded. And, uh, the other that I, the one page four, all the major?
Aye.
Any names? Yeah. Much thanks.
Thank you. Doctor T, any further?
No, we have [inaudible].
Okay, thank you. Doctor T, then, before we, uh, move into, uh, our public comment motion, I would need to miss about [inaudible] with our township committee persons, who are on, Mr. Ray [inaudible], uh, [inaudible], I'm sorry, who has joined us this evening. Welcome, uh, committee members and advocates. Moving down to our public comments, Mr. Long?
Yes, [inaudible]. The Willsburg Township Board of Education, I think I use the input of the citizens in making when the board decisions that affect the children of the community. We also believe the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunities for ten board meetings, and often comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the board business of the district, who had asked that the speakers follow the guidelines, all the guidelines for making public comment. The board secretary will recognize those individuals that deal in, who wish to make comment. We'd ask that you kindly and respectfully follow the, uh, procedures that will not be included this morning. Number one, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your full name and address to your first line. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, in the event where I am to answer your question this evening, submit your questions to the Board of Education with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted, and your questions will be answered in a reasonable period of time. And lastly, and most importantly, individuals offering citizen comments are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, board member on the call.
Thank you. At this time, one members, I'm asking for a motion to approve, hoping to speed to public comments.
Here is the board [inaudible].
Uh, for our [inaudible].
Three second.
Move by Ms. Peterson, second by Ms. Draven. Any further questions? All my favorite?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you. Ms. Paul?
Paul?
Ms. Paul? Ms. Paul, you're up.
Getting to everyone. My name is Paul, I'm [inaudible]. I'm calling, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I was thinking to, uh, I'm able to [inaudible] on the internet, and I found something to be very disturbing about a young kid in school number four, age three, allegedly being accused by a school teacher. I don't know what, what's going on with it, I'm nervous, probably an investigation going on, but my question is, is that school teacher right now under administrative leave until the investigating, investigation is completed to find out whether or not allegations are true or not? If not, I'd like to know why.
It would be inappropriate to discuss the stats, uh, anyone's, uh, being placed on, is it special, uh, [inaudible]?
Yes, uh.
Let me [inaudible].
Sure, uh, Mrs. Paul, there was an investigation, and that investigation is concluded. And the results of that investigation, that the allegations have been found, have been unfounded, the meaning of course, of suspending and removed. That investigation, of course, was conducted by institutions. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we take the appropriate action, because as parents seem to be, um, totally distraught about ISIS coming to their home in regards to the situation, so if we do have young kids that are being treated by school teachers in the school, and they can't see themselves, and they don't know how particularly being abused in school, we need to make sure that our kids are protected. And I'm going to be a voice to make sure, and there's a caution that our children have been educated appropriately, while being taught and being treated correctly and equally by the administration that's in the school system that's raising our children who are at work, okay?
And I, no more.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is [inaudible]. And I live in [inaudible]. That's my grand son, [inaudible]. Just because the allegations wasn't bound to be true, doesn't mean the situation didn't happen. It wasn't, uh, there were several situations, and the teacher is coming back to the class. My grandson is three years old, he can speak for himself. He was abused. Just because it wasn't founded, didn't mean the situation didn't happen. I've been a villain to people for thirty-five years. I'm a taxpayer, I pay me off, working for us, and I'm appalled that the teachers back in the class. This is my grandson's first time visiting the school, and it's horrible. It's horrible. It's horrible. I was left outside when I came to talk to this principal. The superintendent and the vice president didn't call me, "Yo, my dad." My daughter is nine years pregnant, stressed out. I'm appalled. I'm appalled. My daughter spoke at the commencement graduations. I've been a taxpayer, and I'm offended that the teacher is back in the class, and the teacher that was teaching for thirty-five years was removed. Was removed. I want to know why she moved, and the one that abused, that harmed my grandson is back in the class. Can somebody answer that for me? Because he hasn't been back to school, because he's scared to go to school.
It would be inappropriate to answer that in a public forum.
It's inappropriate to answer why she's back in the class.
It would be inappropriate for us to be discussing personnel matters in a public forum to any degree under the law.
Okay, well, I want to know why she's back in the school.
I'm sure that if you had any specific questions for the administration, we wanted to reach out, then individually, under [inaudible] million dollars, [inaudible].
And for the fifteen thousand, I tried to leave out the [inaudible] and I [inaudible], and I was, there was no response. I look here, if it's a million or two million times, there was no response. I even went to the school, and there was no response. I didn't come up here to argue. I come up here to be a act for my grandson. That's why I came. He's three years old. His first experience should be education, love, peace, and friendship. It shouldn't be things that has happened to him. I'm not going to repeat them because I want to. It shouldn't be things that has happened to him. I'm not going to repeat them because I'm going to respect the forum. But he's not sleeping. He can't take a nap. It's not one incident, it's several incidents. And you're not going to go and put him back in his class. How dare you? I'm a thinking. See, I've paid a lot of money to the Boston's corner.
Believe me, I was, uh, a fellow player that I was here when I grew up here in the building, was one of the shredded fellow players.
Okay, are you aware of what's going on in school four?
I am aware that there has been an incident, and I am also aware, Miss Smith, that there is an investigation. It's what also not to repeat what Mr. Long said. We are not, you are permitted as board members of discussing any performance of any employee in the public. Now you, your daughter, and whoever else you would like to bring along with you, we would be more than happy to meet you and answer all of your questions about what you just stated in our executive session. But we cannot, we cannot by state law answer certain questions that you may have about employee performance this evening. It is not, and I want to say, I want to be clear on this. We are not in any way ignoring your concerns. We are not in any way hiding anything. Um, because her, uh, superintendent indicated that there is a unit in the state that is called the institutional abuse. And I'm going to take one minute to, Mr. Long, explain to you what that state institution, a unit does, and what they've done, and what they've concluded. Mr. Long, just a brief explanation?
I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I know institutional abuse.
Good.
I've been in that study years. My, my point is that just because it wasn't founded, didn't mean it didn't happen, and I'm a leader of the board. But before I leave, I'm going to try to stop saying it was an incident. There was incidents, three of them.
Incidents, three of them.
With my grandson and with two other children. So this is just not something we're going to sweep under the rug.
No.
No, and I'm not going to let it happen.
Cause there's no God's.
Okay, there's no God's.
Exactly.
Okay, so I was never able to see. The two intent, or the vice intent. So please, I need your opinion together, please.
Uh, let me, let me add a little, uh, my ability, particularly during the investigation. Once this incident or incidents was under investigation, there is no conversation the superintendent can have with those individuals involved during the investigation. The school district has no right to have any conversation or any input while the investigation is in place. Therefore, during that investigation, we have no obligation, or are we allowed to have conversation with those individuals who may be the parents of the students involved during that investigation. We can be a big, uh, the key, and, and getting ourselves involved in that investigation, Bob. So no, and I know there was communication from the building principal, superintendent, but I will not allow I, that let any of my staff to have conversation while the investigation is going on, because that is not something we're allowed to do.
I'm Mr. Stacy Smith, that was my mother. I also live in Boston's corner. To your question, Miss Long, she was never removed. She was kept in the building in a fourth, fourth grade class and across the hall from him for three weeks either. She was never taken out of home school. She's had three incidents with my son that I had immediately with the principal of the building. And mind you, the principal of the building never gave us a written report. My son's finger was stuck, black. He was not giving medical attention. I didn't get an instant report. It was hidden. She didn't even inform the main teacher that she stepped on his finger and let she gave him a baby. He told us. Secondly, taking a kid's food should never be allowed at school. My son had a special product. I begrudge you that. I gave him meat. My son doesn't eat meat. So minimize. The principal said, oh, it's just an apple. No, it's not. That's his meal. That is his food. All he eats is a banana and an apple all day. His doctor said he eats seven apples a day. That's a blessing. For this teacher to then look me in the eye and tell me it wasn't intentional. But then to have doctors come to my house, how can you not understand my pain? No one can. You're going to be told you couldn't have kids, and that's my dear little child, and he's not going to be mistreated by anybody, by any means. Now I've got several emails to tell me that it's a personal matter. Now it's personal. These are children of color. Three children of color have been mistreated, abused, shown cruelty, harassed by this untenured, my, my teenager, but it's been passed several weeks. She's not even having the experience under her belt. Why is it that she gets to be put in the same classroom with these children who are unfair to her? But to get the teacher, who's the main teacher, a woman of color, only three in the whole building gets to be removed? No allegations against her, no complaints against her, it is depuratory record. Her name literally precedes her, her reputation. She gets removed. That makes no sense. There's ten black kids and ten children in that class. How's it make sense? I want to know, why wasn't this incident with my son documented? I'm gonna tell you why, cause their principal didn't want to have a discipline record. When you go to that school, you're not sure that files, there's no documentation with my son, but we have meetings. We never got any documentation. You know what I got? A trip on the staff we were sent coming in school. Nothing related to the code teacher. Make it make sense. It doesn't. But the end of the script and practicing, and this really stops now. Now you're going to be a partner movement, or you could give them the right, cause I can go to law school and leave the trophy that the white guy and I'm going to say that. I'm going to be in the office and give a bird in the farm, talking with a judge. I'm serious. Motion to the right, I want to take a place. So I want to know, what is the disciplinary? What is the standard for discipline of a teacher who's untenured, who has multiple allegations against them in the last seven weeks? What is the, what is the protocol? How can the principal intentionally read off the parents when they send an email? They have no idea institutional abuse was going in investigation until yesterday. That, that investigation took place on December second. No one came to your house on a Sunday evening, the day of the murder. At eight thirty, my puppy came to the tub. That's what it tell me. My son was drunk on his head. Y'all see a camera of him running in the building. No, look at all the cameras. Y'all rush to the police. These are children. They are the most oppressed group in America. They have no voice in our state of all these days. It is the last thing I say. So remember my name, Stacy Smith. My email is S J Smith three at Gmail. I was a professor at Brooklyn University before that. I graduated from the South. I spoke at the commencement. I'm a breath agent of about a seven year. I have three children. You're going to remember my face.
Mr. Smith.
I'm not finished. No, Dr. Smith, you haven't heard her call me today. You called me today that day the board.
Asking that you show us the respect that you're under. And she understood, and she said.
My mother didn't work right behind it.
You're absolutely right.
So my mother didn't work right behind it.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Smith, and you said this, believe me. Um, we here in the board absolutely understand you. What you're saying, and we can understand the pain that you have, but let me just say this. As in many things, there are opinions, and then there are facts.
Yes.
And you certainly, without doubt, are entitled to your opinions. But I invite you, Mr. Smith, to come and meet with the board in confidence, and if necessary, we can write to the teachers so that we can sit down and have a face-to-face conversation. Let me say this. You talked about last, just look at this board.
Yeah.
You have black children. Do you think, Mr. Smith, that we, as parents and grandparents, would sit here and allow something like that? No, no, absolutely not.
It's happening. It's happening. He's not the first, and he's not the last.
So then, so then, Mr. Smith, are you too good and I'm grateful with the institutional abuse?
Yes.
Do you accept the investigation? Did they contact you at all with the results of their investigation?
In the end, yes.
In the end, yes. And was that acceptable to you?
No, they investigated one incident. That was, I was, I was not satisfied with that one incident, and I didn't even know what hero they call. I haven't even seen the video, and I was told I couldn't see the video because I'm minors, and that's a lie. I didn't do the right to that video, and I'm still looking through the video. So answer me the question, what am I going to do, all the video footage of this incident with my son? I have, you can redact that into the faces. You can blur it up, and the news, the news work fine. Why I have not seen the video because it's being hidden? That's, it's corruption. That's what it is. That's what it is. And I'm calling it out. That's what it is. Why I have not seen the video? Answer me that question. It's been over a while.
Miss, Miss Smith, may I respond?
Yes.
No, no. Because first of all, I'm being accused of not communicating. Then when I do communicate, that's an issue. The reason I.
Cause this continues.
Excuse me, but this is. And, respect, excuse me.
Yes.
Did you send me an email last night at eleven, uh, with a check fifty, not the vaccine? Did you send me an email and you got the fifty seven dollars?
Referring to the video.
Did you send me an email?
Did you ever send me an email, Mr. Smith? No, but did you ever send me an email? Ever. Since the justice November second. No, have you ever sent me an email? Cause the answer is no. You never got one email. Not even the self capacity. You don't need a lawyer to self capacity. You don't need a lawyer to say, Mr. Smith, I understand, I'm sorry, but I can't respond while the investigation is going. I never got that. Unless you need to say that. You need a lawyer to say, oh, you know what, children are priority. You don't need a lawyer to say that. That's your job. Your job is to make the parents feel secure.
Mr. Smith, would you allow us to pretend?
You're not saying much, Mr. President. Will you stick to for the purpose?
Excuse me.
What's the problem? Why?
Just respond to me. But certainly, Mr. Smith, I'm going to just say this again. I invite you, and whomever you want to be with you, to come into and have a face-to-face meeting with the board members and whomever you want to be with, because we're going to resolve this. We are not going to have it be a district to think that we overlook or, as you said, uh, we hide. No, that's not what happened. But all we, what we do want to do is to make sure that we're not going to say to your children, and we also have, we have the police, we have to be mindful, we're in a case, and again, there's opinion and there's a fact. And we're just asking, Mr. Smith, that you come in and sit down and talk to the board. Is that acceptable?
Yes, that's acceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
I will be in contact with you.
You have my number.
I do not have your number because you haven't contacted me. Boy, you want to do.
I've been contacting a lot of people in the board, including Dr. Tietzner.
Well, if you contacted people in the board, then we entirely do not know about it. But let's do this, this three, and I really do hope, and I'm looking forward to sitting down, Mr. Smith, with you face-to-face, so that we can resolve this with that certainty. If you need these things happen, and those people will be having problems, and that this will not happen again. Can we do that?
But if it's in time, at least we should have a little part in the process.
Mrs. uh, Pitts, may I respond? I received an email, this, this last night that I let send, members of the board. So I responded with, in the email, it says one of the time, she could have possession of the tape. I called her, and she said, yes, you have been running bad possession of the tape. You will make that available to me. I also called her back after, also saying, you are aware that we received a letter from the Department of Children and Families, institutional abuse. Those allegations were unfounded. What else would you like for the school district at this time? Mrs. Smith, share with anyone who would want to see that. I thank her, she thanked me. That was the end of the conversation. Miss Board.
Mr. Long, have.
Good evening. Uh, good evening. I'm Mr. Long. My name is Mr. Long, I am a child that's been asked to this my son. Mr. Long, if you ever hear anything that you have frustration with the devil in the class, you can come back. I know, this is very moving, I hear. Just want to make sure that it's, it's clear that this, this better, the teacher black headed, and they kick out, she basically is doing everything. She made three K. So, it's a benefit. This is a good, trying to tell the way he's right, but the law, but I got the old, I'm not the old school. That I'm the old school, and I'll be telling. You should appreciate that this thing, because it can be worse. There's no reason for us to go back and talk about the issue, we take our child, we teach him the trade, we carry him. We feel the same issue with my sister. Don't wait till something else happens. That's the first thing I told you, it's something else happening. I'm going to say my, I'm just telling you, don't wait till something else happens.
Thank you.
Um, I'm a parent, Scott, and I'm a nice guy. And I'm afraid that we're going to be three K, three program, that's first. Taking the school to be in. Kids are scared to go back to school. That speaks long, whatever investigation you guys, investigation you guys did. Kids are scared to go back to that classroom. That's, that's a telling sign that something is wrong. Like, how do you guys not take that into consideration? Like, kids are scared to go back to school. Kids are hiding the teacher from inside the classroom. That's a telling. That's deep. That's traumatizing to kids, going up to the next grade, they're scared to go to the next grade. They're scared for the school. The thing is, you guys say all the human investigation, our child is telling us everything. You may think that they don't have a voice, and whatever the teacher says is hurtful against our kids, but it's not our right to hurt us against our kids. Our kids have a voice. This is a, this is a funded program. This is a grant-funded program. So I speak for all the other teachers, the other parents in this classroom. When I say that till that teacher's removed, this classroom, we're not coming to school. Our kids won't come back.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Holmes. I'm twenty-one, I'm in Boston's Jersey, Boston's Jersey, Boston's corner. Uh, I'm a teacher. I've been teaching for twenty-two years. And the way your teacher has been treating the students of this three K, three class is completely outrageous. Um, when I'm in school, I teach, I treat the children like they're my own children. Because something you have to remember as an educator is that every child in your class is somebody's whole world. So everybody in your classroom is somebody else's whole world. So they may not be your whole world, but they're somebody's whole world. And you have to remember that as a teacher. And I'm worried at the lack of urgency and transparency that this situation has been dealt with. As a parent, I feel like my concern.
They will tell you how they hide in the bathroom. And then the, the, the main teacher has to come and get them out. They are safe with that main teacher. So we just don't understand why she gets to be moved when she's very effective. The kids love her. The, the instruction she gives is thorough. And I would just like something to be done because I just can't send my child back into the classroom, um, with a teacher where she's scared to go. That's creepy. Thank you. I need to know why a highly qualified veteran teacher with no complaints has been transferred? And what is the justification for that? Is it because of tumultuous relationships or tumultuous feelings between an administrator and that teacher? That's not the children's fault, though. I don't know what's going on in that relationship. But now, these toddlers are supposed to be left under the supervision of a teacher with questionable certification, poor student-teacher relations, innumerable parental plates, and a co-teacher who will only be there another one person. So we're thinking that the teacher could be along with the other teachers that have the allegations. But this, a teacher that should be incoming will not be there in the past decade. As a teacher, we operate in local parentis. That means we operate and we serve as the parents and the guardians of these children when their parents and guardians are not present. So if you can't effectively and efficiently perform your duties, there's a problem. So if a student hits her head, and you wait for your co-teacher to come in, and that co-teacher has to tell you, "You need to send that child to the nurse," that's a problem. So whether that, whether it was inadvertent negligence, or whether it was intent negligence, that's really beside the point. The fact that you don't know that a head injury needs to go to the nurse immediately, that's a problem. So the last thing I will say is, I know we can't, um, people are probably won't get any real answers tonight because I know teachers need to be honest in order to really get to the nitty-gritty. But students are safe in the classroom. And just like, um, the young woman's mother just said, just because it's unfounded doesn't mean it's not happening. Because if it wasn't happening, you wouldn't have kids hiding in the bathroom, in the classroom. You wouldn't have students that, you know, see the particular teacher stand there and then fall on the ground crying. If you need to, please go in and interview the students. And I know you need to, you know, point what I'm saying. And that five, every student talks to the kids, and they will tell you what's happening to you. They will tell you how they feel. They will tell you how they cry. They will tell you how they hide in the bathroom. And then the, the, the main teacher has to come and get them out. They are safe with that main teacher. So we just don't understand why she gets to be moved when she's very effective. The kids love her. The, the instruction she gives is thorough. And I would just like something to be done because I just can't send my child back into the classroom, um, with a teacher where she's scared to go. That's creepy. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eric Holmes. I reside in Campbell's Dick, like I just spoke. And our daughter attends this classroom talk about. So it hits us different. It hits us different. The reason, the reason why you see numbers here tonight because as other parents, we're affected. And as I sit here, listen to everybody, and everyone's reaction, and I get it, it's not your world. It's not your, your, your birth, your childhood, so it may that you will definitely, but the solution isn't the investigation is closed. The solution isn't, uh, transfer a ten-year teacher somewhere else. The solution isn't, it's just not. The solution isn't, if you don't like it, take your kid to another district. That's not what we're looking for. I attack you, Peter. We're looking for results. Now, you're gonna say you can't have the results tonight, but one thing I can tell you, as a Black man, as a proud member of the Capitol House of Commons, a proud member of the Crenshaw Freemasons, a proud member of the N W A C F, if this is not resolved, you will hear my rule.
Hello. Um, my address is five E D, um, in New Orleans. Um, first off, I want to start by saying, I'm so sorry for that, excuse me. Um, I have three boys that attend, um, the schools at Woodbridge Township. One in middle school, one being school three, two kids at school three, and one in middle school. Now, what I have noticed is that there is a pattern in the district. There is not just one teacher that is a bad apple. I have several instances with all three of my sons pertaining to restraint from the teachers or the other professionalism from the assistance super teacher. Um, I have an incident this year where my Kimmy Martin started with a tap-in class by one of the classmates that was, uh, he was scared. And I was made aware of the incident by the teacher. But my son, he already did tell me, um, he tapped in class. The teacher did let me know. I said, "Thank you for letting me know, but what are we going to do about it?" Because my son really, his education was interrupted. He was not sleeping in his classroom. And nobody had any information on what they were going to do about it. He couldn't discuss what was going to happen to the little girl. But I would talk to my son, and my son would tell me if that little girl was still in class. So when I send my girls to school, I tell them that they can't put their hands on anyone. And I expect that when they come home to me, no one has put their hands on them. So just like, you guys have a job to do, we have a job to take care of our children. And when we're taking care of our children, that it means making sure that they are safe. So when we took on the role of being their parent and we had to virtually teach them for the past few years, we handled that, okay? We were, we became, well, I became a speech therapist. I became a speech therapist. I became the teacher for different grade levels. So honestly, not just with my situation, but even with other students, there's a mandatory recording. And it just shows that there are so many systemic failures in parental championship that needs to be worked on. And I'm not saying systemic failures are a bad thing, but they are most definitely an eye-opener. And it means that we have worked with it. And I've been school board meetings, not just today, multiple school board meetings. I come to your room, talk with the superintendent. So it's not like I'm just showing up today. I show up often. So also, my son, my oldest son, he has instances where the teachers are abusing their authority by flexing that they can basically write my son up because they have the authority to use him. So what I would like to see done is you guys need some training. Y'all need some training on customer service, professionalism, and these teachers, they're doing these things because they know that they are allowed to get away with it, and they know that you guys are not going to do anything to them. They're not going to remove you. I have, I feel like I have followed every avenue to get, um, to, to just get some type of help for the kids to have the best educational experience. I graduated from Lincoln Township, and I'm actually embarrassed at this point that this is where I graduated from. Because when I was growing up, Mr. Jackson was like a principal that like, you walk in that building, he might get on your nerve. But you walk in that building, he knows who's in this building. He could, he could tell you from behind and with it. But I would say these principals and these teachers, they don't know these kids, and they don't love these kids, and they don't respect them. And we showed them for two years that we got our babies. So don't make us take our babies. Because we will and we can and we have shown you that today.
Madam President, that you would so that mine doesn't speak this evening? I don't hope there's anybody in the waiting room.
Not at this time.
Not at this time. Thank you, Ms. Board. At this time, board members, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn to the public conference.
Motion to adjourn to the public conference.
Friends, moved by Ms. Martin, Senator Allen, with the strength. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving now, board members, at the top of page seven. Is there a long section of session?
Yes. Yes. And, um, we have a section of session, President, uh, for some additional information. I actually want to shake them forward. So, yes.
Okay. Uh, we're to refer to the open public in exact, sorry, not in a calendar. We will be engaging, uh, in important with the open public in exact session. And, uh, under the open public in exact, we will be adjourned to the second session, February fourth, February third, at approximately eight twenty P M. I would anticipate that the second session will be approximately thirty minutes. Uh, the items and ratio will be discussed. Uh, the item one, matters are not at all confidential under the state statute relative to, uh, student matters. And, uh, I would, and they indicated that we need to talk for thirty minutes. And that's a business.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion for approval, moving into the second session.
Motion to the second session.
And the board, moved by Ms. Martin, Senator Lawrence Moore. Roll up, please.
Miss Graydon, yes. Miss Soto, yes. Miss Martin, yes. Miss Moore, yes. Miss Edith, yes. Miss Peterson, yes. Miss Pitts?
Yes.
Miss Thomas, yes. And Miss Tom.
Yes.
Vote to have the air.
Thank you. At this point, board members, we will recess to the second session.